The June 4th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie City Government. Typically, our meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of each month from 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers is the portion of time which is for open podium. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412, by noon of the meeting date with your name, your subject matter that you wish to discuss, and your phone number, please. If time permits, after scheduled speakers, we have an opportunity for unscheduled speakers from the floor. Open podium is not recorded or televised, and again, if you have any questions on this, please contact the city manager's office. Is there a motion for approval of agenda and other items of business?
So moved.
Second. Any items to add?
Sorry, you're looking like it's your time, Ron. Yes, I'd like to, Your Honor, I'd like to add a council member report item on cellphone tower equipment on the ground level.
Okay, and I'm going to add something on meeting updates for us. Anything else? All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council workshop held on Tuesday, May 21st?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the city council meeting minutes for the same date?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Consent calendar, is there anything to pull for discussion there? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Move approval of the consent, A through C.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. We are now going to convene the HRA meeting and keep the city council meeting open. I'd like to begin with the roll call for the HRA, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Here.
Councilmember Butcher-Wegstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Chair Tara Lukens.
Here. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the HRA meeting held on February 19th, 2013?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is resolutions approving participation of the Hennepin County Housing Authority in Eden Prairie Affordable Housing Project. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This particular action is the city's use of community block grant development funds for an affordable housing project. In this case, it's to assist with the purchase of properties by Walt, which is a West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust. Walt has been approved to receive these funds for projects by the Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority as well, and they need the city's HRA approval to go forward with the funding and completion and financing of their projects at 1-5816 North Eden Drive and 1-5608 North Eden Drive.
Are there any questions for Mr. Getcho? Councilmember Case.
Just I want my vote to reflect an abstention of the last motion. I realized I wasn't there February 19th. I didn't realize how far back we were going, and I just checked my calendar, so I will abstain from that last motion.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Getcho on this resolution? Okay.
I move to adopt the resolution approving the participation of the Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority in an Eden Prairie Affordable Housing Project at 1-5608 North Eden Drive and adopt the resolution approving the participation of the Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority in an Eden Prairie Affordable Housing Project at 1-5816 North Eden Drive.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. And just to clarify, this project uses the Community Development Block Grant Funds, which are federally provided for this kind of purpose. These are not dollars coming out of our tax base.
That's correct.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on just this kind of issue. Oh, no, it's a different issue. Resolution approving modification to redevelopment plan for redevelopment project number five and adopting an administrative amendment to TIF plan for tax increment financing. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the reason we're holding, one of the reasons we're holding our HRA meeting is to have a concurrent HRA and city council public hearing, so we can hold the hearing that would cover this project for both the HRA and city council, so you know that as well. And the action here is to modify the redevelopment plan with this TIF district that expands the size of the project area, so the Shady Oak Road South project, the improvement project, is included in the project area. The city anticipates spending approximately $2 million of TIF funds in this TIF plan and district for the project. So this amendment, this administrative amendment, makes a line item adjustment to the estimated improvement costs, including the ability to spend funds out of this TIF district on qualified street and road improvements. And also, the amendment that you're doing tonight does not in any way increase the budget at all, this project. I'll also add that the Goldenrod Sheets are an update to the resolutions that were in the packet. They provide further findings and support as prepared by our city attorney for the plan amendment as well, and he's able to answer any questions that you may have about the TIF plan amendment.
Okay, Councilmember Nelson.
I just would like a real quick discussion of exact, and I know this doesn't change, but if nothing else, it's nice to have the background on tape of why did we do this TIF project in the first place? Not lengthy, please, but.
Short and sweet.
You're talking about the original TIF district.
Right, that this is an amendment too, but why was it that we did this as TIF?
The original TIF project, TIF district covers the Eden Prairie Mall, and the project was done to provide funds from the TIF collection to essentially remodel, update, and make the mall the success it is today. The mall actually purchased their own bond. They purchased the bond, and that's been the vehicle, the collection of those TIF funds has been the vehicle to provide, I think it was around, originally 10 million, I'm not sure, they received all of the 10 million because of some changes in tax laws that occurred between 1996 and during the course of time that they were receiving those payments. But the plan area, the redevelopment area, was much larger than the TIF district, and part of what you're doing tonight is enlarging the plan area, the redevelopment area, to take into it a portion of the city in which we're doing the road improvements for Shady Oak, so that the TIF dollars that Mr. Getcho referred to can be spent within the redevelopment district.
Thank you.
So maybe a quick clarification, if you look at page 64 of your packet, you see the overall boundary that the city attorney is talking about, which covers a large area where we can use these funds, which is very typical in these types of districts, and then the pink shows the expansion we're talking about tonight.
Other questions? Councilmember Case.
Yeah, I had a question right prior to Kathy, but it fits right in. So TIF generally defers or suspends, I don't know if that's the right wording, taxation on future taxable infrastructure growth. So somebody benefits. I mean, in others, we do it for projects like the mall, so that but for the project, they never would have had the funds to be able to do what they did, so we defer taxation until future growth.
If I could clarify, we, the property owner, in this case, of the property within the TIF district, in this case, the owners of the mall, continued to pay taxes the entire time. It does not defer the taxes. They continued to pay taxes, but the difference between the value of the property before we adopted the TIF district and the value as it grows because of the improvements that are made, the city captures that, that's the TIF.
Right.
We capture that, and we, I think it was 90%.
20% went into transportation.
Okay, 20% went into transportation, so a portion, the majority of it went to improvements for the mall, was paid to the property owner to make those specific improvements. And then there is this portion that is for transportation, and then included within the law is the ability to spend a portion of those TIF dollars outside the small district and in the large redevelopment area.
Wasn't it a date certain that they, I mean, it's, the mall, the mall is valued at what it is now and are paying.
I don't believe we're collecting TIF at this point. This is TIF that we have pooled TIF from, right.
What did you?
Well, pooled TIF that we have that we are seeking ways to use for transportation projects, and this is one of them.
Okay.
That's great, thanks.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the council and the HRA on this amendment?
So seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and move also to adopt the resolution approving modification to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project number five and adopting an administrative amendment to the tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing redevelopment district number 13.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then entertain an adjournment motion?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes, or is there a motion to adopt the resolution? That would be a council.
Correct.
Counsel action, I move to adopt the resolution approving modification to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project number five and adopting an administrative amendment to the tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing redevelopment district number 13.
Second.
Déjà vu, I'll have heard.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Payment of claims.
And if I could just, for the record, the motion to adjourn the hearing was a motion on behalf of both the council and the HRA.
Okay.
Because it was a joint public hearing of the HRA and the council.
Yep.
Okay. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wegstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens.
Aye. Next item is the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 1 relating to definitions of misdemeanor and petty misdemeanors. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our new prosecutor recently pointed out, in looking at our City Code, that our code's penalties for misdemeanor and petty misdemeanor fines are not up to date with state statute. So this is a first reading that revises the definitions in the City Code and then adopts the state statute definitions, and then includes any future amendments to bring the code into compliance. So it's nice to, you know, take that action, not have to come back each and every time that the state code is amended or updated. So this would remove some of the, and update some needed definitions in that chapter of the code.
Okay, as of tonight, will be up to date, but prior to tonight, when definitions were a little different between what the state was using and what we were using, how did that affect prosecution?
It did not. The court imposed the fines as required by state law.
By state, it's super.
We just want to be consistent.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And just a quick mention, Mayor, it would not take effect tonight, because you would have a second reading in two weeks as well in publication, but it'll take effect this month.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending City Code Chapter 1 by amending Section 1.02 subdivisions 13 and 14 defining misdemeanor and petty misdemeanor.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We've got a few appointments to make tonight. The first is Eden Prairie Representatives to the Logis Board of Directors. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are a member of a consortium called Logis, or Local Government Information Systems, and many cities in the metropolitan area join together to receive technology services in a variety of different areas. In our case, we utilize Logis for much of our finance software, our utility billing software, our building inspection software, to a certain degree, our geographic information system software. So as being a part of that group, we are allowed to have members of our city be on the Board of Directors, and so it's time to update our appointments. So the action tonight is to appoint our finance manager, Sukhachivar, as Eden Prairie representative, and our IT manager, Kristi Etter, as the alternate to the Logis Board.
Any questions for Mr. Getcho? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move to appoint finance manager Sukhachivar as the Eden Prairie representative and IT manager Kristi Etter as alternate representative to the Logis Board of Directors.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Is that time of year for students on commissions? Mr. Getcho.
It is, Mayor, thank you, and I think we had the same level of interest in our students on commission program as we did with our regular commissions. We've had a really good year with a large number of people applying to be on our regular commissions and student on commissions, and as you know, our student on commission program runs through the fall year and into the following spring, and it provides a great opportunity for students to be involved in local government, and we really do encourage their involvement in the commissions as well, not just attendance, but involvement. So in this case, we did receive a record number of applications, and we actually had to sort through, and I think typically, the preference for some students would be in their senior year, and then maybe some juniors hopefully can apply next year, so we didn't have room for everyone, but you see that we're having as many as four or five people on several of these different commissions. So your action tonight would be to appoint all these students to these five different commissions.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Aho, do you want to start with the first motion?
I would move to appoint to the Conservation Commission Alyssa Minder, Sonia McPherson, and Olivia Urbansky for the fall and spring terms, and.
Appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission Peter Humbert, Amanda Minder, Derek T. for the fall and spring terms, and.
Appoint to the HP Heritage Preservation Commission Greta Colford, Hannah Jeter, and Laura Lindberg for the fall and spring terms, and.
Appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Chase Carlson, Emily Higgins, Karina Lynn, Christina Bush for the fall and spring terms, and.
Appoint to the Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources Commission Gunner Bowman for the fall term, Brian Gelge for the spring term, and Jennifer Powell, Riley Tillit, and Vi Nogen for the fall and spring terms.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Reports of council members, Mr. Case.
Thank you, Your Honor. I received a call from a neighbor who was representing several neighbors up around the Cherokee, Shady Oak area, up across the street from the new Optum UHG building going up on Shady Oak. Concerned that there's a utility pole that's on public right-of-way on Shady Oak, but continues with their neighborhood, that has a cellphone tower, that's a cellphone antenna that's been part of that utility structure for nearly a decade, but over the last couple of years, it's grown and grown and grown as the technology's grown, and it's the ground structure that, it hasn't grown in height, it's still meeting, and we have code on height, and it goes through a permitting process, but the ground structure apparatus has grown and grown and grown. I have pictures of it before each of you to show this one. So I noted in the email string that, of various emails, that Steve Durham from the city had been involved and answered very well in conversations with one of these neighbors. So I talked to Steve yesterday, and just to inquire before I talked to our city manager and then our city attorney, that what's the incidence of how many of these towers are out there, and are we talking hundreds or whatever? So there are dozens and dozens on various private property that are quite small, but we have a handful, maybe six or seven, on city property, and maybe only two or three that come close to this kind of infrastructure. But it raises the bigger question that I wanted to raise tonight, that if my council colleagues agreed, we may want staff to go back and dig a little bit and come back with some thoughts on this. But do we want to have or pursue the idea that this infrastructure should be enclosed in some way? My first thought was somehow fenced. My first thought was why wouldn't the companies want it? There's this massive amount of wires, and I'm looking at, I don't know, six or seven different metal contraptions on the ground beneath this utility pole. So not only is it unsightly, it's the sense that it might be dangerous, and some of the neighbors have complained about electronic buzz, which is going on. I don't know whether that's mitigatable, if that's a word. So I guess my thought for us tonight, and my question of council, is might we look into a little bit more detail on what other cities do? Already, Rick Getcho talked about the last two cities he's come from, they did fence. Wouldn't mind hearing from Mr. Russell tonight, too, about the legality of what can we do? And it sounds like our own current ordinance, which I, with Mr. Russell, if you wouldn't mind reading that one little sentence, but it sounds like our own current ordinance right now gives us some power to not allow this. So I'll ask for further clarification, but then if we could maybe have something come back to us at the next meeting, or the one after that, or something, just, and if it means an ordinance tweak or something, that would be fine. So maybe Mr. Russell.
Yes, Council, I reviewed the letter, the email that you received today. I received it also from Mr. Getcho, and took a look at our City Code as well as federal law, the 1996 Telecommunications Act, and then there was a 2012 Job Creation Act, which has telecommunications implications. And our City Code, to address your point, does allow the city to have design requirements, and some of those design requirements are that, to the extent possible, through the use of color and camouflaging architectural treatment. Deal with the situation, and my comment earlier to Mr. Case when I pointed this out was that that's a broader term than fence in another community. Camouflaging architectural treatment can be a variety of things, and so I think we do have the tools, I just don't know if there's a current permit pending with respect to anything that's on the ground here right now, and so we'd need to look at that, and I had a very short time to talk to Ms. Jeremiah about this, and so I'd want to talk to the community development staff and.
Well, my guess is no, because down on Riley Lake, if you take the turn on the barn side, is one of these, again, with a lot of ground equipment that's not fenced and in no way camouflaged. So what I wonder, and in my conversation with Mr. Durham, who is, I think, doing a great job as best he can, I think he, I'm not speaking for him, but it sounded almost like he was looking for a direction, too, that it would be helpful to have clarification, so he would be able to, you know, go back to some of these companies and say, this is our ordinance, it doesn't just say camouflage. What does that mean? That's in the eye of the beholder, so maybe, maybe, I'm just suggesting that maybe staff could look at this and come back and see if something could be strengthened in what other cities do, and maybe it is a fence with plantings with, you know, I don't know. So does that sound okay with the rest of everybody?
Yeah, especially consider all the rules we have for fencing for other businesses to keep things out of sight that are less sightly, and it doesn't seem fair that we're not holding everybody to a similar standard.
I think it makes sense, too, from a perspective of just protecting the equipment and protecting the public in general, to have it more enclosed.
Good, okay, great, thank you.
And just a point of clarification with respect to existing uses, changes in the City Code, wouldn't, those are grandfathered in under the permits that they've already received, so.
But if they got a permit, and this was already in effect, but they didn't screen, can we do something with that?
Yeah, it depends on what the permit required them to do. If they were issued a permit without screening, I'd want to see the permit before I gave you an opinion about whether there was anything further we could do.
That's unfortunate.
Would it affect if they wanted to put in a new little pod, though?
Yes.
Well, I believe that's why this came to the surface, and I don't know if the permit has been inked yet.
That's right, and that's why I said when you were discussing with me, I don't know the stage at which we're at and what authority we have, and so those are all things that you can be assured we'll be talking about at 9:01 tomorrow morning.
That would be great. Come back to us then, that would be wonderful, thank you.
I just wanted to mention two things. One is that we do have a regular city council meeting two weeks from tonight, but one week from tonight, we have a workshop with the school board at 5:00 here. We are guests at their, prior to the start of their school board meeting, and so that, again, is 5:00 on Tuesday. And just wanted to mention that in tonight's workshop, we talked about reconstruction of Eden Prairie Road and some other road projects within the city. Mr. Getcho, you're going to do a legislative update for us?
Thank you, Mayor, if I could. I think this is the first time in many years that we're not looking at a special session, or I think the end of the session really is the end of the session for the first time in a long time, so I think some of the updates I'm going to provide are final. And I want to focus on the legislative session and some of the effects that it would have on Eden Prairie, and more specifically even on our state-city fiscal relationship, more on the financial piece. I'm sure there's a lot of information out there about the state budget deficit and some other legislation that passed, but I'm just going to focus on the city. There was, for the first time in quite a few sessions, quite a bit of property tax relief that came through both the Senate and the House in final bills, and the city of Eden Prairie stance as a community that receives very little state aid would be that property tax relief should be directed to the homeowner. And in the case of, I believe, 400 and some million dollars of property tax relief, that was the case. Different programs like the Circuit Breaker Program for property taxes, or programs related to income or increase in taxes, and obviously, the city of Eden Prairie makes up 25% or less of someone's tax bill, so this includes all the jurisdictions that we would, someone would be taxed on, but there's some relief coming for those programs, and we'll be sure to advertise that. In terms of local government aid, local government aid is a program that has been around for a long time, and there was approximately $80 million that was put into the local government aid program, and the formula was re-tweaked or redone, it wasn't an overhaul, but as you know, for the past 10 years, we have not received any LGA, nor would we again. There are, interestingly enough, there are a few suburbs, some maybe older suburbs, some inner-ring suburbs have been receiving LGA, but maybe second-ring suburbs have not. We're seeing now that some of these suburbs will receive aid, because the formula was tweaked to include more, to put more weight on housing stock, or 1930s and 1940s housing stock, of which we don't have as much of, but there are some cities that are receiving aid. I think you may even read about Minneapolis receiving quite an injection of local government aid, of which they received already. We don't receive that. Again, our focus is on property tax relief to the taxpayer. Another program, fiscal disparities, which we like to talk about quite a bit, a metro-wide tax base sharing program whereby 40% of the growth in commercial industrial property is put into a pool and then sent back out to the cities according to a formula, the city of Eden Prairie is known as a loser, meaning we get less back than we put into the area program, that we're the number two loser after Bloomington in terms of what we contribute. And I think I've said before, if that program did not exist, the average residential tax bill in Eden Prairie would be 7% to 8% less because of that commercial base we're sending away. Again, that's a philosophy for a tax base sharing program that's been around for 20 or 30 years, and it's based on the idea that we all benefit from large regional retailer commercial properties. There was a study on fiscal disparities last year, and we were hoping for some legislation that might go through to tweak the program a little bit and to look at who's bearing the burden, who's not, and our own representatives, especially State Representative Luna's introduced legislation the past few sessions to make some tweaks in that program, and the mayor and I. And the mayor and I have been a part of different subcommittees looking at that, but nothing was done. There was no action taken at all. There was quite a bit of discussion, but there was no action taken there. But we're always watching that closely. So, probably the two big areas that affect us would be a sales tax exemption for cities and counties. And I've got some numbers on what that might potentially mean for us, but up until, well, through 2013, because this won't take effect until next year, city governments pay sales taxes on purchases. And the idea is somewhat contrary to the concept that most of our revenue is in property taxes, so we're using taxes to pay taxes. And back in, I believe it was 1992, at that time, there was a major recession and a discussion of major cuts in LGA. Maybe Eden Prairie had LGA at that time, I'm not sure. But the compromise at that time was instead of cutting LGA, a sales tax was put upon cities and counties, not schools. School districts do not have this. So, for the first time in almost 30 years, that has been removed, and that's, that's a very positive thing for our community. I think it was townships in 2011 that they removed that for. The decision was made that since that that would provide tax relief for every community to some degree, that there would be levy limits, a one-year levy limit effective in 2014 placed on every city that would be approximately 3%. It would not apply to certain special levies or debt levies, and you're aware that the last three or four levies in our city have been 1% or less. So, we're not concerned at this point about the 3% levy, but many upcoming workshops and meetings, you know, will be devoted to our next budget. But levy limits are back on as well. So, the sales tax exemption, yeah, I'm...
Are you going to go on?
See, yeah, sales tax exemption.
Wait for the number here.
We've, yeah, we've run some numbers. So, we pay approximately $444,000 annually in sales taxes, but it's important to note that about $110,000 of that would be related to our community center operations or liquor operations, and that will not be exempt.
Yeah.
So, we are not being exempted from any other product that could be provided by anybody else in any way, shape, or form. So, across the city, and these are estimates, and based on last year or prior years, we're looking at 333,000.
About 1%.
But that's across all funds. So, that will help our sewer fund and our water fund and our enterprise funds, but in terms of tax relief or our tax levy, we're looking at about $190,000 in our general fund. So, the positive results are that we will be able to budget $190,000 less in our general fund, and we plan to do that for sales tax and show that as a direct reduction in our levy that you will see this summer and fall. So, that's, that's a positive thing as well.
Yeah.
Good.
And then maybe the last two quick things that might, or one quick thing that might not be, I mean, it's not, it's on the fiscal relationship and financing, but not on local government finances, transportation. We're involved quite a bit, as you know, in transportation and sometimes in bonding, and there was a very small bonding bill that passed, which was mainly for cap renovations to the capital. There was talk throughout the session of a major transportation package for many different types of revenue, for transit, for roads. That did not pass, but within a small transportation funding package, not a bonding package or a big package, $37 million was provided to keep Southwest light rail transit moving along. So, that was, that was requested through bonding or in the governor's package for overall transportation funding, but we did receive $37 million to keep that going. So, that would, that would be good to mention as well. So, just want to spend a couple minutes going over some of the, what we'll see related to what we saw at the legislative session and how that affects our bottom line.
Great update. Thank you so much.
And we'll be hearing a big presentation of this at our MLC meeting tomorrow, I assume.
I believe so.
So, if anybody wants further details, there'll be handouts and tons of information on all of this. Anything else? Any other business? Hearing done. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.